County Board of Supervisors to order. And we'll begin our session with a flag salute led by County Council Gerald Carden.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you, Jerry. We'll now move to our statement of meeting procedures read by our county clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 20th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under "public comment." When you speak clearly, state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put into silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now, we're going to move on to our public comment period, and this is the time that the Board of Supervisors sets aside at each meeting where the public can come up and discuss or ask questions with regards to an item that is not on the agenda. If we have anybody that would like to make a statement, ask a question, draw attention to something, please come up to the podium, tell us who you are, and you have the floor.
Great, I'm Veronica Blake. I'm the CEO of Placer Community Foundation, which is at 219 Maple Street in Auburn. I just came by to say thank you for supporting the big day of giving. I hope you got to see the results in the news. It was the celebration of the centennial of community foundations around the country, and as such, we partnered with the Sacramento Region Community Foundation and the Yolo Community Foundation to raise money for 400 nonprofits in the region. So 78 of those groups were from Placer County. Over $3 million was raised, with about a half a million of that going to the Placer groups. We're very impressed by those numbers. They were, in total, 2,899 gifts to the local organizations. The Placer groups represented 19% of the total groups enrolled. 16% of the funds went to the Placer groups. And you might be impressed to know that every organization raised some money. Nobody went home without anything. And probably the most interesting thing that happened was our very own Placer Land Trust raised the second most in the entire region. They raised with match and prize money about $70,000. Some other noteworthy donations came into, in the $20,000 to $40,000 range, Sierra Forever Families, Acres of Hope, and the Placer SPCA. In the $10,000 to $20,000 range was A Touch of Understanding, Auburn Interfaith Food Closet, Auburn Symphony, Blue Line Arts, Community Recovery Resources, Placer Food Bank, Seniors First, and the Gathering Inn. And while we don't have all the data in on this time, the preliminary survey suggests that 30% of the people who gave that day were first-time donors, and that is really significant. And you know, our mission at the community foundation is to grow local giving that will strengthen our community, and we just see the big day of giving as one of those many tools that we can use to employ, to engage people in our community to leave a lasting legacy. And with that, I just want to say thanks, and we have cause for celebration.
Thank you for the report. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment? Okay. It's like, we will now move on to our supervisor committee reports. Supervisor Whitehead? I don't have anything. Supervisor Euler? Nothing? Okay. No supervisor committee reports. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. Is there anything that the board would like to pull off the consent agenda? No? Anything the public would like to see pulled off the consent agenda? Go ahead.
No further.
Okay, we have a second. And a simple call vote.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Holmes?
Euler?
Duran?
Yes. Motion carries. Great. It's like we have a few more minutes before we move to our 9:15 item. So we'll go ahead and start with item 5A, our minutes of April 21st, 2014. All right. We have motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. I am going, are any no votes? Any abstentions? I'm going to abstain because I was not at this particular meeting. Okay, item number six, County Executive, 2014 State Legislative Advocacy Update. Allison Carlos.
Hello. Thank you. Allison Carlos with the County Executive Office. For item six, around this period of time, we normally provide you with an update on state legislation. And actually, today, who's going to be presenting is Joel Joyce from the County Executive Office, among his many duties. Joel is very much involved in bill tracking and legislative issues. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joel. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Joel Joyce with the County Executive Office. Before I get started today, I do want to iterate that this is a point-in-time report. Many bills do change on a weekly, if not daily, basis. With that said, in accordance with the legislative platform approved last December, the county has taken a position on a variety of bills covering health and human services, veteran's services, housing, transportation, natural resources, employee relations, agriculture, and water, some of which are highlighted in your staff report. As of right now, bills in both houses are wrapping up in committees, and then we'll have about a one-month period to negotiate the fiscal year 1415 state budget. The legislatures are expected to adjourn for summer recess July 3rd, and upon return in August, the bills will leave their house of origin for a hearing in the opposite house. The session is expected to wrap up sometime in December, and then the governor will have about 30 days after the session ends to veto any bills. As you guys are well aware, the governor released his May budget revision last week. The administration continues to stress the importance of fiscal restraint as the state begins to come out of the recession. State revenues are expected to increase by about $2.4 billion, with expenditures increasing by the same amount. The cost increases are attributed to a $600 million-plus drought package signed this past string for local water conservation and recycling efforts, about a billion-dollar increased cost in Medi-Cal, and $100 million advance payment to local jurisdictions for state-mandated costs prior to 2004. These state-mandated costs total about $900 million, of which $600 million are owed to counties, and $10 million of that is owed to Placer County. CSAC and staff continue to advocate that any liabilities owed to counties are paid first. As of right now, staff does not know how the administration or legislators will prioritize the payback of these claims, should this payment be included in the state's adopted budget. The May revision also includes no changes to the expected AB 109 realignment funding from the governor's January budget, which is currently budgeted at $934 million. It is important to note that the current funding formula is set to expire at the end of this fiscal year, and as of today, there is no funding, a formula set for the next fiscal year. In an effort to stabilize the state's budget and limit cuts in future economic down years, the administration and the state legislature agreed on a ballot measure set for this November that would amend the constitution to provide a stronger rainy day fund. Should this measure pass, it would require the legislator to set aside 1.5% of general fund revenue and any capital guidance revenue that exceed 8%, as well as create stricter rules on the withdrawal and use of this rainy day fund. Now, I'd like to briefly highlight some of the bills and advocacy efforts staff is currently following. I won't go through everything noted on the staff report, but I'll touch upon a couple of items. Placer County is currently sponsoring Assembly Bill 2547. This bill extends indefinitely the provisions relating to the Placer County Health and Human Services Pilot Program. This program has been in place since 1995 and has demonstrated success in implementing a family-centered and needs-based model to families and children with needs in child welfare, mental health, probation, and education. Currently, this program is set to sunset at the end of next fiscal year. Next, I want to highlight a California Environmental Quality Reform Bill signed last year. Senate Bill 743 authored by Daryl Steinberg pro temp was signed into law to expedite the new Sacramento Downtown Sports and Entertainment Complex, or widely known as the New Kings Arena. The governor's Office of Planning and Research has interpreted this law to apply broadly within jurisdictions and not just to infill development, which is of concern as it relates to traffic level of service determinations and mitigation thresholds in secret documents. County staff is working with a multitude of agencies, including the City of Roseville and CACOG, to reorient the regulatory approach for this law. Staff would like to have the option to continue to use the level of service in secret documents and is arguing for local control to infill and transit priority areas. The Office of Planning and Research wants to shift from a level-of-service model to a vehicles-mile-to-travel model to focus on reducing greenhouse gas emissions and further the goals of AB 32. One of the letters we are asking your board to support is AB 1893, which is an Extended Producer of Responsibility Bill related to sharps. This bill requires sharps waste container to be sold with sharps in the state with the intent that it reduce random sharps in the waste stream that lead to unnecessary sticks and increased costs. Waste management and the cost for disposal was discussed at the CSAC Legislative Conference last week, and there is interest in ensuring that producers are increasingly responsible for addressing waste production of products. Another bill I want to bring to your board's attention is an Employee Relations Bill, AB 2126. This bill is related to mediation in labor negotiations. Staff understands that there are many different ways to look at employee relations bills. However, maintaining local control does remain as a lens through which your board has supported how staff analyzes legislation in the past. AB 2126 unnecessarily modifies terms in the Meyer-Millis-Brown Act, the collective bargaining law that has successfully permitted local government agencies to enact their own reasonable rules and regulations governing employee relations. This bill would replace mutually agreed-upon mediation and require mediation if either party requests it after failing to reach an agreement during the meet-and-confer process. Staff believes that this would result in an unnecessary time delay and an increased cost to the county. The action we are requesting of your board today is to send an opposition letter for this bill, which is similar to your actions your board has taken in the past with similar legislation. Now, I'd like to highlight another important issue, and that's water. As your board is well aware, water in this state is a complex and controversial, and even more so with the drought we are currently experiencing. Staff is currently following two main pieces of legislation, Assembly Bill 2463 and the Water Bond Bills. AB 2463, which the county has supported, would require the Department of Water Resources to partner with the regional water authority supplier, including water suppliers in Placer, El Dorado, and Sacramento Counties, and require a plan to address reliability of water supplies for the Sacramento Region's communities and environmental resources to be submitted to the legislature prior to January 1st, 2017. In addition to AB 2463, staff is closely monitoring all activities surrounding the future of the Water Bond. Besides the bond that's on the current ballot, which was originally authorized in 2009, there are currently 11 other bonds in the legislature, which is providing increased complexity for the legislatures and stakeholders. Currently, there is not a single clear path to which the bond will prevail to go before the borders, and there seems to be increased chatter that the current bond will remain there. Due to the multitude of bills within the legislature, staff is bringing forward a Water Bond Principles Letter, which suggests language the board may want to approve for any water bond. The Principles Letter addresses funding for water supply storage, improving groundwater management, funding for regional water infrastructure, and equitable funding for the two conservancies within Placer County, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy and the Tahoe Conservancy. As of last Thursday afternoon, CSAC released a similar letter, and copies have been provided to you. CSAC's letter does have a few different elements than our letter, most notably language regarding the protection of these existing water rights and funding for disadvantaged and small communities. Our letter does include language that the bond bill does not advance the controversial twin tunnels as currently proposed in the Bay Delta Conservation Plan. The letter before your board materially correlates with CSAC's letter released last Thursday. However, CSAC is also more descriptive on water and forest management. Staff can certainly modify our letter slightly to ensure that we capture the important language related to forest and water management, and it is of staff's belief that submission of a letter will help advocate for a bill that supports these principles as Water Bond talks continue to progress. With that, staff and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. Excellent report, excellent update. Appreciate the information. On the language relating to the Water Bond, if, I would say if, you know, my board is comfortable with this, I do think it would be appropriate to put some language in there about watershed management and forest management, particularly as it relates to our request relating to the Sierra Nevada Conservancy and the Tahoe Conservancy fund allocations. I think it's important to recognize and maybe reiterate in a letter how much territory on the West Loop, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, actually, I don't want to say overseas, but has under its purview as compared with the Tahoe Conservancy. And they are also two different, as you well know, water regions. We have the La Hona Water Board on one side and Zach Valley on the other. So if no one on the board is opposed to adding some language about watersheds and forest management, I think that would be important to add to the letter.
There was something in the staff report that you had.
I believe.
In the staff report, yes, but not in the actual letter that's going out.
Item four is provide equitable funding for
Yeah, that's correct.
Placer County conservancies.
Yes.
For the Sierra Nevada Conservancy and Tahoe Conservancy. So you wanted to add something other than that?
I'm proposing that we add something specific about watersheds and forest land protection as part of item number four.
What we would do is we would just tear off of what the CSAC letter says, and just so you know, it says, "Funding for watershed management activities, including forest management and fuel treatment projects that reduce wildfire risk and promote watershed health."
Yeah.
So something of that nature, we would add on to the conservancy piece.
Fair enough.
Yeah, just slightly more descriptive than what's there.
I like
Yes, Barbara.
In addition, the notion of, you know, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy boundaries, landmass, one of the rubs typically by critics who are supporters of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy is that it doesn't proportionally get the kinds of funds that are set aside in the Water Bond negotiations for a range of reasons. So if you had some basic numbers in there referring to the acreage as compared to the Tahoe Conservancy, just as a measure of disproportionality, that, so for example, the California Coastal Conservancy gets a huge amount of money. I think the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy gets more than the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, or about the same amount. And I think that's the point you're trying to strike at. So something that's kind of numerically oriented in terms of landmass, but there are a lot of barometers and measures, the amount of water that's used in California that comes from the Sierra, but it just tends to get
diluted.
It doesn't, yeah. It's not as successful in the negotiation process down in Sacramento.
Okay. Supervisor Euler?
I, whatever we can do, I appreciate the explanation and further understanding what the issue is, and whatever we can do to strengthen our hand, I support.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. We're now going to move to our first timed item, Health and Human Services, Proclamation, May 2014 Mental Health Month. Maureen Bowman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It is my pleasure to bring to you a request to approve a proclamation to promote mental health awareness by declaring May 2014 as Mental Health Month in Placer County. I'm also delighted to have as part of this presentation David Bartley, a speaker from the Malhealth Speakers Bureau. We all know the importance about taking care of our health, but good health includes not only caring for our body, but also our mind. Nearly one in five Americans, some say one in four, but if we say one in five Americans over the age of 18, and so in Placer County, that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 61,000 people, will experience a diagnosable mental health disorder in any given year. It's not a disease of a few, it's really a disease of many. In addition, approximately 70% of Americans believe they are experiencing physical and non-physical symptoms of stress, but really only 37% believe that they're handling it well. For this year's Mental Health Month, Placer County is wanting to just raise awareness of the role mental health plays in our lives and providing tips and resources so anyone can take steps to promote good mental health, such as building social supports, recognizing the signs of stress, and knowing when to reach out for help. With that, I'd ask Ann and David to give you a resource bag. It includes a lime green, as you know, is the color of mental health awareness. Put the lime light on mental health. It includes a green ribbon and a cup and resources. There's some great resources in there, so. It also gives you an opportunity, if you're using that for shopping or you wear your green ribbon, that you can explain to people the importance of mental health and why you are caring about this issue. I'd also like to point out, you may have already seen it, the local community billboard on Highway 80. This week encourages people to join the California Mental Health Movement, and because Each Mind Matters, which is the slogan, and eachmindmatters.org has just a wealth of information about this important issue. We really want people to reduce stigma so that they feel comfortable reaching out for help. The stigma campaign is what keeps people from getting the help, probably much more than a lack of resources. And so really, making mental health just be part of our health continuum is going to let more people get help earlier and really cost us a lot less money in the long haul and a lot less pain and suffering in terms of people being able to get the resources. Next week, the billboard is going to encourage Placer residents to know the signs of suicide, know what to do when they experience a friend or a loved one that they're concerned about, know what to say when they reach out to that person, and know how to get resources. There's a great brochure in your bag that is Know the Signs of Suicide. It's also a campaign, web-based information. Suicide is preventable, and just really walk step-by-step what people can do. It's the kind of information that we are promoting that really helps people, I think, get something concrete in their hands to be helpful. We're also continuing to train lots of people in Placer County on mental health first aid. We feel that's a great program. It's down to an eight-hour program, gives them facts and information, what to do in cases of having somebody that they care about have a mental illness, and what to do, de-stigmatizing the issue, and just giving them resources to reach out. So just as Americans have learned, there's lots of things that they can do to reduce their risk of heart disease and other diseases. Again, in Placer County, we want to make sure that people know what they can do to protect their mental health during tough times, but also improve their mental health through their lives. One of the things that we're doing with really decreasing stigma is having real people in Placer County tell their stories. We shared with you an insert, and I gave you an extra copy of that in the brochure. It got distributed last year, and it had lots of stories of people, four stories of people. David Bartley was actually featured in that newsletter last year. And so with that, because he's a real person in Placer County, we're going to ask him to say a few words in terms of his story of recovery.
Good morning. So in August of 2011, actually, August 31st, I found myself at the psychiatric health facility. Most of us know that as the Puff in Kirby Hills. And the reason I was there is, in the Sutter Emergency Room, I had answered yes to two questions to the psychiatric intern that she had posed to me. The first was, did I intend to harm myself? And I said, yes, absolutely. And did I have a plan? And I tend to be a methodical, organized kind of guy, and I definitely had a plan. And my plan was to go up to the Forest Hill Bridge and jump off and end my life. And just to give you a comparative point, 14 months earlier, my then-wife and I were featured as the cover story in the Life section of USA Today. Not a small little article, but actually, we were the full-blown cover story in the Life section, and that's, we were being celebrated for the work that we were doing, running our end-of-life animal sanctuary, A Chance for Bliss, just down the hill in Penrunt. But 14 months later, there I was in the mental health facility because I wanted to commit suicide. That, I don't look like the standard person who has a mental health disorder. Most people who know me are shocked when I stand up and tell them that I suffer from depression, that I have days, even now, that are very, very challenging. And the insidious thing about my particular malady, depression, is that it robs me of a sense of self. Then while I can know intellectually that I'm a good person, that I took care of dying animals, that I'm a good church member, that I give back to my community, there is something about the way my mind works that doesn't allow me to view myself in the most positive light. But the good news is, is while my whole story is too long for me to share right here, that I can go right to the end of the story and say that there's a happy ending, that I am in fact here today as a healthy, vibrant, excited-to-be-alive human being, directly as a result of the facilities and the resources that Placer County in particular has provided and continues to support, that the staff that I had at the Puff, at Ankle Behavioral Health, at the Men's Depression Support Group that I go to every Tuesday night, at the Placer Independent Resource Services, all of the different programs that you as supervisors and that our community at large continue to support and advocate has literally saved my life. And as we make this proclamation, or as we ask you to make this proclamation, and your continued support, my job to go back and paying it forward is to go out and to reduce stigma. Because really, the only difference between me standing in front of you with a shirt and tie and my brother or sister who's standing in the median is, is that I was able to get help. There was an interesting article in USA Today just a few days ago that had said that 60% of people in the United States who have a mental health or a brain disorder don't get treatment. And the other fact is, is that most, if not all, brain disorders, the behavioral aspect is something that was begun many, many years before. And in my own case, my grandfather committed suicide, my father was chronically depressed and died very young, I had the trauma of losing my father at seven, and then had the very unfortunate experience of being sexually traumatized by a Boy Scout leader at 11 years old. So those instances, coupled with a genetic predisposition, didn't manifest until many years later. So oftentimes, the stigma of what we as people, mental health consumers, what we look like, how we behave, how we may smell, or how we may speak, that is something that had its genesis many, many years before. So the point is, we need to embrace those who are most different from us. And my job is, is to reduce stigma, and primarily because depression, schizophrenia, schizoaffective disorder, those aren't what we call casserole diseases. When somebody has heart disease, or cancer, or even in this day and age, AIDS, people oftentimes will show up with lasagna and baked goods and all kinds of outpourings of support. But when somebody has a mental health disorder, somebody who has bipolar or schizophrenia, we oftentimes distance them. And the problem is, and having had this experience myself, they stay stuck in shame. And shame is toxic. Shame is lethal. Shame, as Dr. Carl Jung said, is a soul-eating emotion. And if we can, by things like proclamations, by somebody like me standing up and saying, "It's okay to be vulnerable, but be authentic," to say, "I have a mental health disorder, but I take advantage of resources," that recovery is in fact possible, happiness and vitality is something that we can all achieve, that we can, through compassion and kindness and love and understanding, help one another and raise that bar, and Placer County can continue to be the wayshower to not just the state, but the country at large in embracing those who have mental health challenges. So for all that you've done, seen and unseen, the countless hours for not only the programs here, but all the things that you've done to make this county fantastic and continue to be a leader in the state and in the country, thank you so very much.
Thank you. That's a pretty powerful story. Very much.
Thank you so much. And with that, we would just recommend that you raise awareness about mental health by proclaiming May as Mental Health Month in Placer County and encouraging all of our residents to pay attention to their mental health.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I was, I just wanted to make a comment about the stigma of mental health and how this program is working. I was at the Mental Health, Alcohol, and Drug Advisory Board last night, and it sent out a editorial about needing members for that board, and we had seven potential applicants to come onto that board. And the amazing thing is that each one of those people, if you talk to them, they have either suffered from illness, they have a sibling or a family member. So we don't have to go very far in our range of people to find someone that is in that situation. So anyhow, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and thank you for your comments, and I'll move that we approve this.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Great, thank you. We'll now move to our 9:30 timed item. It's Facility Services Public Hearing Granite Bay Parks Trails and Open Space Assessment District.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Wright out Facility Services with Mary Dietrich this morning. We're here on the third item in the annual assessment for Granite Bay. We're asking that your board today conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution which approves the engineer's report. It would also confirm the diagram and assessment, and order the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2014-15. And this is for the Granite Bay Parks Trails and Open Space Assessment District, which assesses 7,970 parcels in the Granite Bay area, and the funds that are derived from that assessment, they provide maintenance, operations, and utilities for eight parks, 30 miles of multi-use trails, and 20 miles of bikeways. This goes back to, that number's not here. So in 2014, we've and utilities for eight parks, 30 miles of multi-use trails, and 20 miles of bikeways. This goes back to, that number's not here. So in 2014, we've come to your board in February to direct preparation of the engineer's report, which is filed at the clerk of the board's office. In April, your board directed that we come back on this day to levy the assessment. And through the calculations that the engineer performed, looking at the costs and numbers of parcels, and the 2.57% CPI this year, we found that the new assessment for 2014-15 should be $74.78. This is a dollar eighty-six increase for each assessment. And if there are any questions that your board has, I'd be pleased to answer them.
Any questions of the board on this item before I open the public hearing? Supervisor.
Not as much a question as an observation. We have, in the Granite Bay area, unlike this particular assessment district, we have a number of CSAs that were originally established back in the 80s and 90s without any COLA adjustments associated with them, especially along the Douglas Corridor, we're running into a number of issues where we just, quite frankly, with the cost of water going up the way it is, the cost of labor going up the way it has over the last 15, 20 years, we're running out of money for maintaining along Douglas. And so I just wanted to acknowledge Mary and her staff for kind of raising the issue about a year ago. We've taken it to the MAC already once, and at some point, we'll be coming back before the board with some thoughts on how to roll these into a larger, perhaps a larger, community benefit district kind of a concept and be able to actually maintain and water the landscaping and novel approach. So just wanted to say thank you for your efforts along those lines. I look forward to working with you to make all that happen.
And if I might add, the other challenge that we found, when these assessments were set up back in the early 90s, not only didn't they have a CPI, they also didn't allow money for major capital rehabilitation.
Right.
And so we're finding that the irrigation systems are poor. We want to pull out landscape, we want to pull out turf, that's, you know, frankly, we're watering the roads when we can. But there's a huge expense to turn that into drought-tolerant landscape. So part of the work we're going to do with Kirk is looking at the landscape plan that would take to accomplish that, and then wrapping all of this into a recommendation for your board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. With that being said, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. For anyone that would like to come and discuss the new fee structure for the benefit area, going once, going twice, three times, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I would move approval of the 14-15 assessment for the Granite Bay Parks Trails and Open Space Assessment District.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to item number eight, Health and Human Services Administrative Services Resolution Contracts and Agreements. Actually, that was taken off the...
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning.
We'll get that.
I'm Rebecca Millot. I'm the Director of Administration for Health and Human Services, and I'm before you today to request adoption of the super resolution, authorizing the Director of Health and Human Services in partnership with CEO, County Council, and Risk Management to execute renewals of 57 identified agreements, sign subsequent amendments, submit applications, accept grant funding, and execute revenue contracts and non-monetary cooperative agreements. The super resolution process is a time and money-saving arrangement first approved by the Board of Supervisors on October 23rd, 2001. For the past 13 years, this process has been utilized to create efficiencies and redirect much-needed resources from administrative overhead to client service deliveries. There's a variety of vital and mandated services provided to the residents of our community in these agreements, including medical services, inpatient psychiatric care, adoption planning, AIDS HIV patient care, and veterinary services. The following criteria were used to select the 57 identified agreements. Total contract amounts of less than $400,000 each, originally approved as standalone items by the Board of Supervisors, executed with effective beginning dates in fiscal year 2014-15, and they do not currently require a competitive bid or proposal process. All expenditure agreements executed as a result of this resolution will remain within 10% of the prior annual term amount and will allow for signature authority up to 10% in the initial amount for subsequent amendments. These agreements total $5.6 million and are funded 76% through outside sources such as federal and state revenue, and 24% of general fund. Authorization is also requested to submit applications, approve revenue contracts, and accept grant funds in amounts under $400,000, and execute non-monetary cooperative agreements, such as memoranda of understanding. This authorization grants HHS the flexibility to quickly respond to much-needed revenue opportunities that otherwise would not be attainable due to regular procedural timelines. On a final note, approval of this resolution in no way obligates the county to move forward with any individual contract agreement should programmatic needs or available funding change. This action simply continues to support efficient procedures that assist us in providing timely implementation of necessary services to the residents of Placer County. With that, I will take any questions you may have.
Any questions of the board? I don't see any. Any questions of the public? I don't see any. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Great. All right, we will now move back to our timed items. And I believe our 9:35 AM timed item is going to be pulled. Is that correct?
Chairman Duran, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services, yes. It would be our request to continue the item for the County Service Area Assessment Report. After publishing the board memorandum, we determined that there was a disparity in the parcel count and the resulting assessment in the Dry Creek Park CSA number 169. And so we would request continuance to a date and time certain on June 3rd to be able to present this item with corrected information that would be part of the public record.
Okay. Is there any opposition from the board on that request? Okay, then we will go ahead and...
Do we want a motion?
Yeah.
We need a time. Third at 9:25?
Okay. I need a motion and a second.
I made that we reschedule this item for June 3rd at 9:25.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great. Now we will jump back to item number seven, Facility Services Property Management, Health and Human Services Adult System of Care. Now we're back on track.
Chairman, excuse me, Chairman of the Board, Members of the Board Supervisors, Lori Morris, Property Manager, Department Facility Services. I have with me today Michael Masakowski, Senior Project Manager, has been instrumental in the negotiations of the proposed lease agreement for the Kirby Hills facility. It's appropriate today that, as the proclamation was passed by your board, and awareness of Mental Health Month, and to bring this item before your board today. We're asking your board today for approval of the 15-year extension or lease renewal of the agreement for the Health and Human Services Adult System of Care Program's occupancy at 101 Kirby Hills in Roseville, and a monthly rent of $86,098 between the county and BSB Roseville LLC. This lease includes tenant improvements totaling $2,250,000. That is a, there was a numerical error in the recommendation stating $2,227,000, so I wish to correct the record of that, of which 1.5 million is funded by the landlord, BSB Roseville, and the remaining amount of $750,000 is being recommended in the fiscal year 2014-15 capital projects proposed budget. And also to adopt the resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services, or designee, to administer on behalf of the county all provisions and responsibilities of the agreement, including any future tenant improvement provisions. The county has leased the 54,600 square foot psychiatric health facility in Roseville since 2000. The facility is used by Health and Human Services Adult System of Care to provide a full spectrum of mental health services, substance abuse treatment, and in-home support services. In late 2013, it was also occupied for the South Placer Children's System of Care Program, as well as the board district offices. In 2012, in anticipation of the 2015 lease termination, county staff and HHS Adult System of Care Program staff began planning for what to do at the end, and decided that it would be best to issue a request for proposals to determine what else may be available for continuation of these services that would provide the most programmatic and cost-effective approach. From the RFP, we received three proposals. The one proposal received from the current landlord was the most advantageous from a cost standpoint. It maintained the rent at the current base, and also provided the contribution from the landlord at 1.5 million. With that, staffs worked with Adult System of Care to determine the tenant improvements that would be needed to improve the efficiencies of that building, and have come up with a plan for basically demolishing a current unused kitchen facility in the building, and converting those to administrative offices, renovations, and increased capacity of staff restrooms, and some reconfiguration of offices for additional doctors, client interview rooms, and other outpatient programs. The extension provides the lease to continue until 2029, and this lease will supersede the current lease agreement. The staff feel we were successful in negotiating some improved performance measures or performance standards with the landlord to increase their responses to maintenance and repairs needed, and also eliminated an obligation for us to have to contribute towards capital expenses in the form of our operating expense contribution. The rent will adjust in a fixed amount by 2% annually versus using the Consumer Price Index, which can be somewhat volatile, depending on inflation. And we believe that the proposed tenant improvements will ensure a optimum service delivery for the programs. The $750,000 being requested from your board provides for installation of data cabling, security access upgrades, systems furnishings, project management, and legal costs. And the funding for this is recommended in the fiscal year 2014 proposed capital projects budget. I also have Maureen Bowman here, Director of Adult System of Care. Should you have any questions for her, and we are here available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of the board? Supervisor Holmes.
You're removing some unused kitchen facilities. Am I to assume that there are other kitchen facilities at the site?
Yes, there are mostly warming facilities, correct, Michael?
Yes. Okay. And so the food is prepared off-site and then brought in and warmed?
Yes.
Okay. Does that come from our probation department, or here we go? Here she comes.
The food preparation is really just for two residential programs. The psych facility has what I call airplane food that's delivered every day in containers that are very safe. And the ANCA, which is a residential, actually has a small kitchen that got developed with facility self when we first moved into the facility. And there, we couldn't use the industrial kitchen, we need to use a small kitchen where residents actually help prepare the meals with staff.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All righty. Any further questions? It looks like it. Any questions from the public on this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for...
Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Great. We will now go to our 9:45 AM timed item, Facility Services Public Hearing Annexation of Midori Properties to County Sewer Maintenance District 1.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, Members of your board. I'm here this morning to request that your board hold a public hearing to consider annexation of parcel 075182005000 into Sewer Maintenance District 1. The property is located near the end of Christian Valley Road in North Auburn. Midori Properties LLC requested the annexation to provide sewer service to the two-acre parcel. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time that they choose to make payment. The current fee is $6,344 per EDU, and this would be a one EDU annexation. Staff supports this request, and the action I have for you is to hold a public hearing and at the end of the hearing, adopt the resolution included in the staff report to annex parcel 075182005000 into SMD 1. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board has.
Any questions of the board on this item? Any questions of the public on this item? Oh, that's right. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone here to speak on the item? Okay, well then we'll close the public hearing. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Thank you very much. Great. Now we'll move on to item 8B, Children's System of Care Request for Proposals Award and Contract Whole Person Learning, Inc. Richard Connect.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, Members of the board. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. The state continues to recognize the value of supporting its most vulnerable foster youth who are transitioning to adulthood by providing housing support, counseling, and mentoring specific to the unique needs of this group. Statewide and nationally, as you know, many of these young adults unfortunately often find themselves homeless or incarcerated after leaving care. Whole Person Learning has effectively delivered these services in recent years in Placer and has supported in the last few years a successful transition to adulthood for nearly 150 former foster children, many of whom would otherwise face early adulthood without housing, educational support, or other basic resources. More than 60% of these young people are currently enrolled in post-high school academic programs, and a number of them have or are soon to graduate from college. The independent RFP panel convened by the county was distinctly impressed with Whole Person Learning's proposal, based on its unique and noteworthy client survey process, strong local oversight and leadership, employment of youth with lived experience, and its excellent outcomes compared to state averages. This contract allows access to $594,000 in state dollars each year. No county general funds are required. I'd recommend acceptance of the panel's RFP consideration and the department's request to contract as outlined. I'd welcome any questions.
All right. Any questions from the board? Any questions of the public? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back.
Mr. President.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. We'll move to item, it's like it's 48, item 8C, Human Services Contract, Placer County Office of Education Child Care Services.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Duran, Members of the board. I'm Cheryl Davis from your Human Services Division. Today, I'm here before you to ask your approval of our annual contract with the Placer County of Office of Education to administer our childcare funds for our welfare-to-work families. The contract is over $1.9 million, 100% state and federal funds, no county general funds are needed for this, and it serves an average of 260 children a month in childcare. This is another example of a Placer County program that assists, much like the mental health programs you heard earlier, that assist our parents in getting back to work and helping their families towards self-sufficiency. And I want to share an email with you I received last week from a parent who, over 10 years ago, was able to access the subsidized childcare program. She was aware we were bringing this report, this contract, before you today. I wanted to share her personal story of the great impact that childcare help had on her life. She said, "Over 10 years ago, I was a mom, a young, single mom with very little child support. On my own, I was quickly dismayed by the high cost of childcare." For, at that time, for a child under two, it cost about $600 a month to put your child into childcare. She was making $8.50 an hour, so netting about $1,000... She was making $850 an hour, so netting about $1,000 a month, wasn't leaving very much for rent. She learned about the Placer County and PCOE subsidized childcare program through child support services. She applied and was accepted, finding a very good provider for her daughter until she transitioned into preschool daycare. Her daughter is now 13 years old and an honor roll student at Bowman School. She said, "The program saved me from having to go on aid, allowing me to continue working and expanding my work experience, therefore becoming a value, adding more value as a prospective employee." She moved to increasingly better jobs, first as a preschool teacher, then as a school secretary at Placer High, then on to becoming a legal secretary for a local attorney here in Auburn, and then finally, for the past seven years, having the toughest job ever working for our county executive's office." Our own Melissa Poplin was the one who emailed me today. Melissa said she is so grateful to the county and PCOE for the assistance she received and wanted to share her story. She does not think she would be where she was now without that kind of childcare assistance all those years ago. It provided her an opportunity to get on her feet and make the best of a difficult situation. So I'm here before you to ask your approval of this coming year's contract so we can help make other successful stories, helping other parents get back on their feet towards self-sufficiency.
Great, great. Any questions of the board?
I just want to thank Melissa for being willing to come forward with her story because I think it's so important to be able to tie what we do and the actions we take to real people and real positive outcomes. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Yeah, and I would also like to thank you for having the courage to tell, to share your story with us. All right. I'll go ahead and bring this back to the board.
Mr. President?
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Great. We'll move over, move on to our item 8A, or 9A, Sierra College Boulevard and Douglas Boulevard Sidewalk Improvement Project.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Peter Kratz here with Public Works for the Record. Next to me, I'm happy to introduce Jeff App, Senior Engineer with Auburn Engineering, to present this item to you today.
Good morning. I'm here to request the board adopt a resolution awarding contract number 1182 for the construction of Sierra College Boulevard and Douglas Boulevard Sidewalk Improvement Project, the Sierra National Construction, in the amount of $516,996, which has had county council and risk management's review and approval with no net county cost. Also, to authorize the chair of the board to execute the construction contract number 1182 and authorize the director of Public Works to execute contract change orders for the amount of $60,000. This is for the Sierra College and Douglas Boulevard sidewalk project that is going to put curb gutter and sidewalk from the county line just south of Old Auburn Road up to Eureka and then fill in some gaps along Douglas Boulevard. And I guess I'm open. Any questions?
Great. All right. Any questions of the board? It's like we have none. Any questions of the public? We have none there, and I'll go ahead and bring this item back to the board. All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstention? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. I'm now going to turn this over to our county council, Jerry Carden, to take us into close session.
The board will now adjourn to close session to take up a conference with legal counsel, two items of new existing litigation, and for a conference with real property negotiators regarding property on Atherton Road.
All righty. How long do you think it'll? 15 minutes? Half hour? Okay. About half an hour.
Close session. From a conference with legal counsel on new litigation Gina Gleason versus Deborah Bowen et al. The Board authorized the defense and indemnity of the county clerk recorder Jim McCauley on Richard Malat versus Placeta County, Nevada County. The Board authorized the defense and indemnity of the individual county employees and officers named and served in that litigation and also waived the conflict to allow the county council's office to represent all Placeta County defendants and the county. And in the conference with real property negotiator, the Board heard a report and gave direction to its real property negotiation team. That concludes the closed session report.